Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to ask that you take your seats before the council is formally convened as we await the arrival of a few more members. There is a presentation that is to be made, and I'm now going to call on the council member from the 11th Council District, the Honorable Cindy Misakowski for a special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. It gives me great, a great honor today to be here and present a resolution to an outstanding city employee, one who joined literally the ranks of the city in 1967. Standing beside me is Lieutenant Rita Connect. Rita joined the Los Angeles Police Department in 1967. She joined in a rank and as a rank, she came into LAPD in a rank that no longer exists. Rita is the most senior-serving member of LAPD who joined the ranks of LAPD as policewoman. We have women now in LAPD, but the women who are in LAPD today are just like the men, police officers. I don't know how many of you saw the early issue, the issue a few weeks ago of Los Angeles Weekly, which did a whole story on rethinking, re-looking at the LAPD, but in it were some marvelous pictures from the 1960s and early 70s of the policewomen who joined LAPD in those years, wearing white gloves, wearing high heels, some of them earlier wearing white uniforms that looked more like nurses' uniforms. But Rita was a pioneer. She joined LAPD after having graduated with a bachelor of science degree in nursing. So when she joined LAPD at that time, women officers were not called out to homicides and to gruesome locations where crimes might have occurred. But with Rita, they made an exception because they felt with her nursing background, she could probably manage through those gory crime scenes, which might sometimes not be pleasant. She worked tirelessly in many, many units, but really developed early on a capability as an investigator in those homicide cases. She was recognized for her outstanding investigative abilities and selected to be part of the robbery homicide division on the West Side Rapist Task Force and the Hillside Strangler Task Force. She was commended on innumerable occasions over this 35-year career, but she specifically had some expertise early on on cases of child abuse, child molestation, and sexual assaults, and developed protocols early on, today we're talking about DNA and rape kits. Early on, Rita helped establish protocols for the freezing of evidence so that evidence could be recovered and tested and used forensic techniques to really help solve crimes. As she advanced up the ranks through her many different positions in LAPD, she ultimately became an expert in a matter that comes to city council's attention quite often, and that's in the area of labor relations. She was, became very knowledgeable about the disciplinary system and often established training programs for command officers on police discipline as well as rank and file. She was very, in fact, her knowledge on this was so critical that she was tapped to be part of the Rampart Investigation Division to help give insight and information as to some of the reforms that are now utilized on a regular basis in LAPD. I first came to know Rita when I was first elected and was both on the Budget and Finance and the Police Committee, and through those years, we had a tremendous negotiation going on, on a major, major case that the city ultimately settled called the Kimpel Litigation, which dealt with overtime in LAPD, dealt with issues of adjusting and adjudicating that. And Rita's expertise and knowledge was invaluable in helping us to settle that case, get beyond it, and establish again the rules under which fair labor practices, fair management practices are now a part of LAPD. It is with regret that I am passing this resolution to Rita today because she has really been an amazing member of the LAPD team, of the LAPD and the city team in terms of management, in terms of oversight, and in terms of so many things that are now well-established as part of LAPD. The one thing that we don't have anymore, but we are saying goodbye to with regret is this woman who joined LAPD as policewoman, Rita Connect, and is retiring 35 years later as lieutenant to Rita Connect. Rita, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm really overwhelmed by this wonderful presentation. I'm tickled to be retired, but I'm going to miss all the many people. I would like to thank the council. I've had a lot of support from council members and their staff, particularly Councilwoman Misakowski. I would like to thank Ron Deaton and his staff. You have given me tremendous advice over the years dealing with city issues. And to Nate Holden when he was senator, who was a strong supporter of the laws that helped victims of sexual assault. And he sponsored a bill to allow minor children to sign for treatment when they had been sexually assaulted. People forget that we've come a long way. Thank you, Nate. I wish to thank all of the city people who have worked with me over the years. It's been tremendous. It's been a very grateful career and very gratifying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and on behalf of the entire city council, we wish to congratulate you on your retirement, Lieutenant Rita. Give her another big round of applause, won't you? Mr. Clerk?
President Glanter, Garcetti, Grill, Han, Holden, Labange, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Ryan, Padilla, ten members present in a corner, Mr. President.
Well, thank you very much. What's the first order of business, sir?
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Ms. Misakowski moves, Mr. Reyes seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han moves, Mr. Holden seconds.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's a couple items to be addressed. Item number five, a request that that matter be continued to October 29th inasmuch as it will allow for public notification.
All right. We shall proceed then.
Item number 53, request from Councilmember Misakowski to receive and file this matter.
That will be the order without objection.
And item number 61, Councilmember Misakowski requests this matter be referred back to the Public Safety Committee.
Per the request of the council member, it's referred back to the Public Safety Committee. Next order of business, please.
Item number nine is the commission appointment. It's the appointment of Melissa Applebaum to the Board of Civil Service Commissioners. There is a personnel committee report recommendation.
All right. Is the commissioner present for the purposes of consideration?
Good morning.
Good morning to you as well. Members of the committee, we have Ms. Melissa of the council, we have Ms. Melissa Applebaum before us. She comes to us as recommended by the Personnel Committee. The chair of the Personnel Committee is available to comment on the matter. The inevitable Dennis Zine. All right, Ms. Applebaum, perhaps you would choose to address the council on your desire to serve and why you are so credentialed to do so.
Yes, thank you. I'm looking forward to serving as a commissioner on the Civil Service Commission. I currently just finished a term serving as a Quality and Productivity Commissioner, which was a great experience and a great introduction to politics in the city of Los Angeles. And I look forward to continuing my tenure in the Civil Service Commission and hopefully make a difference and be able to be a very fair and judicious person on the new position and be able to assist the city and the city employees in any matters that come before me.
All right. Are there any members who wish to pose any questions to Ms. Applebaum? It comes to us as a recommendation from the committee that has oversight in this instance. Saying no one who wishes to be heard, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Non-tabulate to vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you, and congratulations, Ms. Applebaum. And you may see the clerk for your swearing-in to proceed with the city's business. And thank you for serving. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, items numbers one through eight on the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing. The council may wish to hold item number seven, so it may be considered along with item 65.
All right, as you suggest, Mr. Clerk, are there any specials on one through eight? All right, saying none, Mr. Clerk, on those items, please open the roll. Close the roll. Non-tabulate to vote.
Ten ayes.
Next order of business, please.
Items numbers 10 through 41 are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right. Are there any specials, Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council Chair. I'd like to call number 14 special.
14 is called special by Mr. Reyes. Are there others that wish to be heard?
Yes, two more, items 39 and 40.
39 and 40, special by Mr. Reyes. Item number 36 is being called special as well, Mr. Clerk. All right, if there are no other specials, then we will proceed with the vote on the balance of the items. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Non-tabulate to vote.
Ten ayes.
Next items, please.
Mr. President, as I point, items 10 through 13 are ordinances that will be held over from one week until October 9th for a second reading.
All right, per our procedure, we will hold ordinance overs. Mr. Labange, you wish to be heard?
Yes, Mr. President, item number 23 was approved. And I just want to thank the people from the Founders Church of Religious Science for coming down there. That's going to be a new historic monument, cultural historic monument for the city of Los Angeles on Sixth Street. So it has been approved, and we'll have a ceremony. So go back and do the good community work that you do, and God bless your building and all around the Founders Church. Please stand up and be recognized by the city council.
All right.
The Founders Church of Religious Science.
Founders Church.
At 3282 West Sixth Street, just west of Vermont. You're now a historic monument, walking, talking, and doing all the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. All right, members of the council, we have a special presentation that we're going to be favored with at this point in time. Mr. Pacheco has afforded us an opportunity to honor one of our very own, so we're going to dispense with the agenda just for a few moments as he comes with the special presentation. Mr. Labange.
Can we welcome Alexander Elementary School, Alexander Avenue?
All right.
The fourth district, the heart of the Willshire area.
Those students from Alexander, please stand up. The students from Alexander Elementary Schools, please stand and take a bow.
Good job, all right.
Are you standing? You may stand up and wave at us, all right? Give them a big round of applause. Thank you very, very much. All righty, we have students from elementary school, and we have one of LA's local legends. Let us then welcome him to the council chamber as Mr. Pacheco and company leads him to the podium. Give him a big round of applause, won't you? The one and only Oscar de la Hoya. We welcome the mayor as well as our own colleague, the Honorable Nick Pacheco. Please proceed, sir.
Thank you. Mr. President, colleagues, it's obviously a great honor to stand before you and recognize an individual who is part of the Latino community, but not only part of the Latino community, but is a great champion of the community on the east side. As you know, Boh Heights is a community that's very dear to me and many of us on the council who have started there, like Mr. Burnson, Xavier Slavsky, and other individuals, Jackie Goldberg, we're all part of the Boh Heights community. And today, I wanted to And today I wanted to bring up Oscar and the mayor's also with us because we wanted to recognize the community champion, Oscar De La Hoya. I'm going to share with you, I'm going to share with you obviously some basic background that I think we all know about Oscar, the boxer, 1992 Olympic gold medalist. He was the only U.S. gold medalist in the 1992 Games. 1996 and 2000 fought and defeated WC Champion Julio Cesar Chavez. September 14, 2002, in a fight that was titled Bad Blood against WBA Champion Fernando Vargas, was one of the most anticipated fights of this year. De La Hoya TKO'd Vargas in the 11th round of 148, was able to win the title from Vargas. Now, I want to talk a little bit about Oscar and what he's done for the community. But I also want to talk to you a little bit about the type of individual that he is. In 1992, when my predecessor, Councilmember Richard Alatorre, was doing Feliz Navidad in all the housing projects in the district, Oscar De La Hoya was a part of that project. In April of 2000, Oscar, recognizing an incredible need in the Latino community to raise awareness and to bring quality treatment to patients who suffer from cancer, working with a fine institution in Boyle Heights, the White Memorial Medical Center, opened up the Cecilia Gonzalez De La Hoya Cancer Center, something that we're all very proud of on the East Above and beyond that, we know about the Oscar De La Hoya Youth Center, which deals with our youth and giving them training not only as boxers, but he has an academic portion, tutoring, after-school work with book projects and book reports. But he's also an individual who, without talking much about things, will donate an air conditioning that was so badly needed at Garfield High School. Or when, as you all know, and let me give another plug for the East L.A. Classic, the Roosevelt High School, Garfield High School game that's coming up at the Coliseum. As you know, the Coliseum was an area that we, has a field that is specifically used. So Oscar, without any publicity, donated athletic shoes to both football teams, Roosevelt High School and Garfield High School, so that they could compete on that field. Also, he sponsors scholarships at Garfield High School. And also, in April of 2001, he did something which I really think indicates Oscar's sense of community and support. There was a Boyle Heights competitor by the name of Greg Puga. I don't know if you know of Greg Puga. Greg Puga is a golfer who grew up in Boyle Heights and was able to make it to the Masters in 2001. And every time the Masters is held, they have a par-three competition. And Oscar was, volunteered his services to be Greg Puga's caddy that day. And so, I'm telling you, we have an individual here in Oscar De La Hoya that understands that sometimes you are of service to other people, and I'm sure Greg Puga will never forget that day. The most poignant thing I can share with you, and you were all here when I started as a council member, and in October of 1999, when we had that tragic, tragic accident on Lorena Street where a pregnant woman and two of her children were wiped out by a traffic accident, leaving two children to survive with a father. Oscar, who was in the neighborhood at the youth center, became aware of what was going on with that family, and without any publicity, without any fanfare, helped them get through those times by financially supporting them and paying for those funeral services and helping the family deal with the trauma and tragedy of basically half of a family being entirely eliminated through that tragedy. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about our community champion, Oscar De La Hoya. And let me just tell you that we're very proud of him and what he does for the community on the East Side and the services he brings to all of us on the East Side. Let me bring up Mayor Han.
Thank you, Councilman Pacheco. Members of the council, I too have gotten to know Oscar De La Hoya, not only from television and the great gold medal in the 1992 Olympics, but also, as Councilman Pacheco points out, without fanfare, without seeking publicity, Oscar De La Hoya gives back to the community. In an era where some professional athletes say, "My job is not to be a role model," Oscar De La Hoya continues to give back to the community in a very quiet way because he cares about the community he grew up in. Growing up in East L.A., learning to box at the East Side Gym, continuing to be involved. And I remember there was a secretary in the city attorney's office, Hilda Alatorre San Amiria, and she became ill. She was a friend of Oscar's, and we were at White Memorial Hospital, and I was surprised to see that in the midst of everything else going on in his life, Oscar De La Hoya quietly came by to be with her in her final days, to give her comfort. She was very involved in getting the new Silesian Boys and Girls Club done, and Oscar was very instrumental in that as well. But he does things like that every day, as you heard from Nick Pacheco. That was not unusual for Oscar De La Hoya. And we are so proud of him as our community champion, as our champion of Los Angeles, that I wanted you to know that mañana will be Oscar De La Hoya Day. Thought I might read that in Espanol. Yo James Ke Han, alcalde de la ciudad de Los Angeles, en nombre de sus residentes. A través de la presente declaro el 3 de octubre de 2002 como el día de la Oscar De La Hoya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Señor presidente, solamente quiero presentar también acompañando a nuestro honrado Oscar De La Hoya, su familia. Tenemos al señor Oscar De La Hoya, Joel. I present his father, Joel De La Hoya, his brother, Joel Junior De La Hoya, the sister, Cecilia De La Hoya. Also, también, en español para todos ustedes que hablan español, quiero presentar este reconocimiento y acto del concilio, dándole comendación a Oscar De La Hoya por todo el trabajo que ha hecho para nosotros en la comunidad de East Side, in Boyle Heights, y todos los latinos de Los Angeles de parte del concilio San Luis.
There are members of the council who wish to be heard, and we will begin at this point with Mr. Holden, followed by Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Reyes.
Mr. President, members, Oscar, congratulations once again. You're a great role model, great fighter, and when I saw much money you were earning, it was tempting for me to come out of retirement. And I will, and I will do it. And I'll take on the champion. I'll go out and take, I'll come out of retirement. I'll take on the champion, bantamweight champion. Pretty good. But I want to say that you're loved by all. When I first met you, Richard Alatorre, of course, but Bob Arum brought you in here, and there's a guy named Jerry Nathanson, who's the state athletic commissioner, wonderful guy. We all took pictures together. And from that point on, following your career, but the guy who believed in you is right in back of you right now, over your left shoulder, Bob Arum. And when he put you in that first major fight over here at the Olympic Auditorium, and there was a championship fight, but you know it's a championship fight, and it was pretty... The fact of the matter is that Bob says you're going to be on top, and you didn't prove him wrong, you proved him right. You're on top as a good fighter, clean fighter, but also as a good person. And I've seen you out, and I know you are such a person, and I do know you care. And I wish you luck and the best of luck and success as you go on to become a champion and a champion all over again, repeat the performance that you just showed so well the other night in Las Vegas.
The Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, let me tell Mr. Holden I would pay some good money to see Oscar whip your butt. I think your time's up, Mr. Holden, so I'm sure you can...
Wait, wait. Point of order, Mr. President. Point of order, Mr. President.
The Chair extends a point of personal privilege to Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, I mean, in all fairness, I'm a different class. I'm a heavyweight.
Yeah.
At weight 225 and shape, you know what I mean. Even left jabs hurt you. But not with my friend.
Thank you. Proceed, Mr. Garcetti.
Oscar, I just want to congratulate you. I think that you are such a class act. You've been a friend to my family for a long time. I know you once dedicated a fight to my father, and it meant a lot to me as a kid when you did that. And we were all rooting for you. We are so happy to see you win. I think you give credence, not only in your community activity, but also in the way that you're a fighter, to what Theodore Roosevelt said about speaking softly and carrying a big stick. It really shows us what classiness is about. At a time when professional sports seems to sometimes be declining away from that, you really raise the bar for each and every one of us, and it's mirrored in the community as well. Muchisimas gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. The Chair now recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Oscar, I just want to take note of the young people right behind you. Many times the media has a way of ignoring and neglecting what we, as a diverse city, can do. And the old adage is, every time the plane crashes, that's news. But you're a plane that has been able to stay on top. You're soaring. You've been a great example for all of us, and I just want to thank you for that. The evening of the fight, I had the privilege of having all my family, a lot of my cousins and relatives. So it's not just about the fight, it's about the point of emboldening that family spirit. And you do that, and you've done that in a very significant way. And you're a role model for all of us, you probably hear that a thousand times. But the fact is, I would hope the media can expound on what it is that we do as communities, and you yourself as an example of all the tribulations you've been able to overcome. Just want to thank you for that, and thank you on behalf of all the young people that have someone to aspire to. Thank you so much.
The Chair recognizes Mr. Zine, followed by Ms. Perry, and finally, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I had a few moments in the back room with you, and it wasn't like Councilmember Holden wanted to do. It was cordial conversation, but your warmness, your personality, your character, your reputation. And I was at a local place in the San Fernando Valley the night of the fight, and to see the fans that you have, the silent fans who were cheering, was amazing. And I have not been to many boxing or wrestling matches, but that was a special one. And the person that was challenging you didn't come across as a very professional individual with his comments, and you maintained that professionalism, that integrity. And hearing the comments from Councilman Pacheco, what you've done for the community, what you've done for people, is a reflection of the upbringing you've had with your family and the belief that you have. And you have become a star. You are a star. And you did tell me that you're going to reach a new plateau in the near future when you get that custom motorcycle. As I am a Harley rider, and I welcome you to come join the Harley riders as we cruise through the territory because it's an exciting thrill for everyone. But your career is going well. You're a professional individual who's got a great heart, great courage, and a great following. God bless you and keep up the good work, Oscar.
Chair now recognizes Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to rise to tell you how much I appreciate the work that you have done on behalf of outreach on the issue of cancer, outreach, education, and encouraging people to seek treatment and to work with the health providers, providing better treatment for people, particularly people who are lower income, and especially women, drawing on your own personal experiences. So you lead by example, and I want you to know that everyone appreciates that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. The final speaker is the Honorable Tom Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Pacheco, and the great Olympic champion and world champion. What was a wonderful reciting of all your accomplishments, because you came from Boyle Heights, and you had great family and great people around you, and you worked hard, and then you give back big time. There's more Olympic champions in Southern California, but I think you're one of the brightest stars that I've heard of, of all the work. And being a Garfield guy and buying Roosevelt shoes is really something that is absolutely amazing. But this is the beautiful thing about our community, that someone comes from our community and fights their way to the top, whether it's in your profession of boxing, or whether it is in politics, or whether it's in community service. And I'm just welcomed with Janet here and all the young people from Alexander Avenue School who are excited about meeting you on this special day. But I have just one question for the mayor. Mayor, in your growing up there, did you ever have a battle with the great champion of the 15th District, Ms. Han? And were you, and who won?
Oh, a draw.
Draw, that's good. Okay, good.
You're not obliged to answer that, sir. Mr. Burnson.
I do want to add my congratulations and tell you how much I have admired what you've achieved. Coming from Boyle Heights myself and a fellow, you're alumni of Roosevelt High?
Garfield.
Oh, Garfield, that's different. I used to have this running thing with Richard Alatorre all the time, Garfield and Roosevelt. But anyway, it really is, I think that of all, you know, all of us kids that grew up in the Heights, we're all very, very much fight fans, going to the Olympic Auditorium and Hollywood Legion. And, but I think of all the great fighters that have come out of, out of the Boyle Heights area, I think that you're far and above, and the way you've conducted your personal life is an example for all the kids. So congratulations, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. And now for a presentation.
Before, I just want to make sure we introduce Richard Schaefer, who's the business manager, Oscar De La Hoya, Golden Boy Enterprises. Obviously, Bob Arum, Top Rank Promotions. And without further ado, our city champion and world champion, Oscar De La Hoya.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I feel honored. I actually, for the first time, I feel speechless because this is such a, it's going to be a memorable day for me and for Los Angeles, East Los Angeles especially, because it makes me proud that I can say I do come from East Los Angeles because East Los Angeles showed me how to be responsible, how to, how to work hard, how to conduct myself in a positive way. And the message that I try to send out is to all the kids who listen to me, to all the kids when I go to schools and speak to them, to tell them that there is hope, that there is, when you work hard, when you, when you dedicate yourself to something, you can achieve whatever you want to achieve. And I'm extremely happy that I did win this fight because it, it gives me an extra motivation to go out there and, and show the kids that anything is possible. And this win was not just for myself, for my team, for my family, but it was a win for all of Los Angeles and especially East Los Angeles. So thank you very much to all the people who have been supporting me throughout my career.
Well, thank you.
And if you can, just one more, and I have to say this in Spanish, of course, because a lot of my... a lot of my fans are, speak Spanish, and so I just want to say that. A toda la gente que me ha apoyado, muchas gracias. Ha sido un placer de ser su campeón. Y esta victoria no nomas era para mí, para mi equipo, pero para toda la gente del este de Los Ángeles, a toda la gente mexicana latina que está apoyándome, a toda la gente que quiere trabajar y luchar para hacer algo positivo en su vida. Así que saludos a todos y gracias por todo el apoyo. Y pues nuevamente salimos con la mano en alto. Así que muchas gracias por este día tan especial para mí. Gracias.
Members of the council, and ladies and gentlemen of the audience, I think Oscar de la Hoya deserves a standing ovation from us today for his contributions to our city and our respect for him as an individual.
Mr. President, one final comment. Tomorrow night, Oscar de la Hoya Foundation Gala Dinner, October 3rd, and tomorrow is Oscar de la Hoya Day in Los Angeles, October 3rd.
Mr. Pacheco, would you tell me what Mr. Holden is doing right now, please? Thank you so much. We will proceed as permitted. Or is there a motion to entertain a five-minute recess? It has been moved by Ms. Zakowsky, seconded by Mr. Reyes. We will take a brief recess to honor the occasion. All right, Sergeant, if you can ask the members to return, that would be helpful, so that we can proceed with the balance of the meeting. And if we can attempt to restore some modicum of order to the camera personnel, you will have to conduct your interviews with those budding stars on the other side of the columns. Going once, going twice. Sergeant, please instruct the reporter that they now need to move on so that the council Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum reassembled?
Doesn't look like it at this moment.
Mr. Curry, Mr. Landry, if you would find the members who would help us constitute a quorum, we would be appreciative. Mr. Banks, please assist us in that pursuit.
Mr. Banks and Mr. Landry, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So you have Mr. Curry here.
Thank you.
I swear, it's a losing battle.
All right.
But I respect your attempt. He's cute for a fighter.
Yeah, yeah, he is. A good-looking kid. No, it's not. I have a... That's the best advice I've gotten. Mr. President, Mr. Holden. We have just now reconstituted the meeting. We now have a quorum. We've exhausted every point or privilege of pugilism that we could imagine, I think. And for the record, it should be stated that Mr. Holden did not issue a public challenge to our guest. He effectively positioned himself in the rank that he felt capable of handling at this point in his journey. That was, I think it was the flyweight. The flyweight.
No, the bantamweight, which is where he was. That's 105 pounds.
Yes, right, there you go. So you, the record is corrected, Mr. Holden. Did you wish to proceed?
Mr. President, remember...
Mr. Holden volunteered to supplement his training by being the heavy bag, right?
The heavy bag. All right, Mr. Burnson.
You called me a bag, now just a heavy or light bag? All right. Very good, Mr. Burnson. Mr. President, I think we approve item 35. I was out of the room, and if we can get reconsideration for the purpose of calling it special for some questions being answered, I'd like to do that.
Thank you. What's the status of item number five, Mr. Clerk, 35?
Item number 35 was adopted.
All right. Per the request of Mr. Holden, it is before us for reconsideration. Please open the roll on reconsidering item number 35. Close the roll, non-tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, thank you very much. He wishes to call that special, and we will proceed from that point. Next order of business, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, items numbers 42 through 63, with the exception of 53 and 61, are items which public hearings have not been held.
All right. Any specials? Anyone wishing to be heard on those matters as indicated by the clerk? Seeing no such person, please open the roll.
Mr. President, I believe there's maybe a card on item number 52.
That is correct, and that's from Maria Jimenez and Alejandro Carrillo.
Did you wish to call that matter special?
It will then need to be called special. Be alert to the fact when we call item number 52, you will be heard at that time, all right? Thank you. On the balance, Mr. Clerk. Please open the roll, close the roll, non-tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you very much.
Inasmuch, as item number 42 is an ordinance, that will be held over one week until October 8th for a second reading.
All right, all ordinances...
October 9th.
Will be held over to the date specified by the clerk, and those persons wishing to be heard on those items should be alerted to the very same. Next order of business.
Mr. President, item number 64 is a closed-session item. Do you wish that to remain on the desk?
That would be advisable.
So item number 65 is before you?
Item number 65?
Yes. Special?
Yes. Ms. Zakowski?
65 special.
65 is being called special. The balance, Mr. Clerk.
There is no balance on that. It is special, so that brings you back to the first item called special, which is item number seven. However, item 65 should be considered before item seven.
It is now then before us, without objection. Ms. Zakowski, item number 65 is before us. This is a biblical injunction, the last shall be first. Proceed.
Let's take the last with the first, because 65 and seven are related. I don't think, 65 was the public hearing on the Brentwood Improvement District, the bid in the Brentwood Village area. There were some questions raised at the public hearing last week about equity of apportionment, equity of benefit, and if the city attorney or city clerk can address some of the issues that were addressed in a letter, essentially saying that some of the issues that were raised were appropriate to have been raised, and there were recommendations and changes recommended by the city attorney to make sure that as the bid program goes forward, guidelines would be adopted to provide that specificity of equity in terms of benefit to be received. So I think that that essentially addresses that item, so I think we can move on 65. And then item seven is the ordinance itself and the ballot tabulation. So let me ask the city clerk the results of that information.
Mike Carey, the city clerk. The protest was roughly 14.45 percent, so the council can move forward with the adoption of the ordinance. We did report to the council relative to the, some of the issues that came up on the protest. We've recommended that the management district plan be amended with an expanded description of the services to be provided to ensure there's more specificity, and so that the assessees can determine whether those services are being provided in an equitable fashion. With those changes, we would recommend you move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Members, we do have an 86 percent support, only a 14 percent protest. We have addressed, and I would ask that we incorporate the city attorney and city clerk's recommendations as an amendment into the bid documents, and I ask for an approval and an aye vote on item seven, and also affirm item 65.
Thanks very much. There are no other speakers wishing to be heard at this point in time. Mr. Clerk, we will proceed as suggested, that is to dispose of item number 65, and then work our way to item number seven. Is that the preferred order?
I believe you can take them both together if you...
All right. If there's no objection, they are both before us, item number 65 and item number seven. If you would open the roll on those items.
As amended.
As amended, open the roll, close the roll, non-tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
With thanks to our city clerk and his staff. Next order of business, please.
Inasmuch as there's an ordinance involved, that ordinance will be held over for a second reading on the 9th.
Thank you.
Next item is item number 14, called special by Councilmember Reyes.
All right. We have several cards on that item. Mr. Reyes, what is your pleasure?
Council President, we've had public hearing in the committee already, and our action is gonna be basically to send it back to commission.
I see.
So since we've already had public hearing, I don't think it's really necessary at this time.
Are you approving, excuse me, are you approving the committee report and then amending it to send it back to commission?
Yes.
All right, there's no one else wishing to be heard. These cards are from persons who have come to speak to the matter. It is going to be referred back to...
Commission.
To the commission, where at time the public hearing will no doubt be...
Engaged, yes.
Reopened. And so we wish to afford those persons an opportunity to be heard and a fuller context, namely, the commission itself. These cards will be attached to the file to indicate that you were here to be heard, and you have indicated what your position is on the card, and that will become a part of the permanent record. Is there a second to the motion, having been made by Mr. Reyes, to refer this matter back to commission? All right, Mr. Burnson has seconded. The clerk has the cards on the file. Are we ready to vote? It seems that we are. There are no other speakers in the queue. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the motion by Mr. Reyes, seconded by Mr. Burnson. Now, I'll close the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That would then be the order. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, item number 35 is called special by Councilmember Holden.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, the city attorney is on her way over, but maybe while she's coming over, you want to skip to 36? skip to thirty-six. Take that out of, and back to it.
Item number thirty-six is a technical correction, namely that of changing the words in recommendation three from predatory gouging to predatory pricing. We are particular about our predatory references, obviously, here. Mr. Clerk, did you capture that?
Yes, I did.
All right. Then if that's the case, we can take item number thirty-six up as it comes to us from the ITGS Committee. Please open the roll with those...
Mr. President.
I'm sorry. On thirty-six?
On thirty-six.
Please, proceed.
It's just for information only, Mr. President. I don't have a real problem, but I just think I need to have it clarified as to where we're going from here and that we, the applicant who chooses to raise the rates, increase the rates, cable TV services, feel, make a request with ITA, is that correct?
Correct.
For rate increase?
Yes.
Okay.
And the upshot is that we, as an elective body, the mayor and the other elected officers of the city, have to be notified when such takes place, rather than what happened in this instance.
Right. We'll be notified when such request is made, correct, Mr. Chairman?
Correct.
And then following that, we have ninety days, I believe, to respond to the request?
That's pursuant to federal law. This is a...
Right. I just wanted an explanation, Mr. President. Ninety days to respond. If we respond negatively, negate the increase if it can't be justified, the applicant will stay on file for one year. Or if they implement the increase, we have a year for a hearing on that, and if it turns out that they were not justified, was not increased according to federal regulations, that they have to rebate to the ratepayers, the consumers.
That is our understanding.
If it's discovered, something is discovered that the television company, cable TV...
Yes.
Did something illegal, off-color, was not justified raising the rates, then that application is in for a year. We have a year to say, all right, we can challenge it according to the federal law and that you're not, you should not have been authorized to increase that to that amount, and you have to rebate, give it back to the ratepayers.
Pursuant to federal law.
Pursuant to federal law. And I just thought it was important to make that a part of the record, speak it out in the open, and the public will be given due notification.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Starting with the city council. All right. Thanks very much. If there's no other discussion or any further questions on the matter, please open the roll, Mr. Clerk. Close the roll. Non-tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thanks very much. Next order of business.
Okay, that was adopted as amended.
As amended.
The next item of business, item number thirty-nine, called special by Councilmember Reyes.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Reyes on item thirty-nine.
Thank you, Madam President. On item thirty-nine, I would like to add a verbal amendment to this motion. I needed to add language to make sure that we complete our task here. I'd like to amend the report. Recommendation number two, to add additional language after the last sentence, ending with the word porch. And that would begin with, and further advise the applicant that all building materials used for this project shall match the existing materials to maintain historical integrity, and all materials shall be subject to the review of Community Redevelopment Agency, the CRA. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, did you get that amendment?
Yes, I do.
All right. We have a technical amendment. The chair recognizes Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes. We're on thirty-nine right now? I'm sorry. I'd like to speak after we finish this item.
All right. Then the matter thirty-nine is before us, as amended by Mr. Reyes. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Garcetti for a reconsideration. Mr. Garcetti?
We can please reconsider item fifty-eight. We have an amending motion.
Is there any objection to anyone for reconsideration on item fifty-eight? Seeing none, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. That...
Eleven ayes.
All right. That matter fifty-eight is now before us. Mr. Garcetti, you have a technical amendment? It has, has it been circulated?
It has been circulated.
It has been circulated. The clerk has it. Now vote on, let's vote on the matter as amended by the amendment. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved. Mr. Clerk, next item?
Item number forty, called special by Councilmember Reyes.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd also like to do a special verbal amendment on this item. Amend the report. Recommendation number two, to add additional language after the word "shall," and that's in quotes, "match existing materials to maintain historical integrity and all materials shall." And that should end the amendment.
All right. Does the clerk have that amendment?
Yes, I do.
All right. Then item forty is before us as amended. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Did Ms. Galanter, did you?
Eleven ayes.
All right. That matter is approved.
Madam President, item number fifty-two is called special inasmuch as members of the public wish to be heard.
All right. This is a required public hearing, and we have a card that was submitted by Maria Jimenez and Alejandro Carrillo. Do you want to come forward and speak to us on this item fifty-two in the rent escrow account program?
Yeah, can you help me, please? My English is not so good. Somebody, you have somebody who speaks Spanish? No.
Do we have...
My English is not...
Yes, this translator's coming forward.
I'm going to solicit that they can get me out of the REIT, because I've complied with everything that the city has asked me. I came to solicit that they can get me out of the REIT because I've complied with everything that the city has asked me. I've done everything that they've asked me, all the permits that they requested, everything that they have asked me. And that said, thank you very much.
All right. Let me call on Mr. Reyes in whose district this is located.
Thank you, Madam President. I just said that this is a positive case for them. We're taking it out of REIT. We understand he has complied. So therefore, we're going to move forward. He can continue with his property. Está bien?
Está bien. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
All right. So we've heard Mr. Reyes indicate that this is being removed from the REIT program because all the issues have been settled, have been resolved. So that matter with the resolution is now before us. Please open the roll. And close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That matter is approved.
Madam President?
Chair recognizes Councilmember Garcetti.
I know this is slightly out of order. We already passed it, but I just wanted to say a quick comment about item sixty-two, which we all just voted for and supported. It's Prop forty-six, which is the housing bond. Myself, Council President Padilla, and Chair of Housing Committee, Wendy Grule introduced this motion. It's going to be an important statewide bond. Thank you, colleagues, for your support, and we urge the members of the general public to take notice of that as well, that we are supporting this proposition as part of the city's official legislative program to address the housing crisis here in California. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, do you wish to take the ordinances and reconsider them inasmuch as you have twelve members at this time?
I think that would be appropriate. Let's call out the ordinance numbers and for reconsideration.
Items numbers seven and eight, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and forty-two.
All right. Members, those matters are before us. They were all unanimously approved, but with less than twelve members. So if we vote to reconsider them, we can act on them today. Open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right. Those matters, those ordinances are now before us. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right. Those matters are approved unanimously, and they will go forthwith to the mayor. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, on the desk, we have item number thirty-five. Did you wish to hear that at this time?
Thirty-five, I believe, was called special by Mr. Holden. Is the city attorney present?
Yes.
The chair recognizes Mr. Holden. Oh, the city attorney first for presentation.
Claudia Cullings, City Attorney's Office. This is a report that we wrote to you, or to the Economic Development and Employment Committee, based on a question that we were asked, and that was whether the city could legally permit, or could legally provide for a preference for local business bidders, and if so, whether there are any constraints on the city's ability to provide that preference. We've responded with an analysis of the various constitutional provisions that, and statutory provisions that apply, and we've concluded that you, and charter provisions, we've concluded that the courts allow us to have a flexibility in using this local bid preference when we're talking about participating in the market. So if the city is doing business, we can use that. If we wanted to tax based on that local character, we probably could not, or at least it would be much more difficult. If we want to utilize this bid preference that's authorized in the charter, Charter Section three seventy-one, we need to make findings that the courts have held are appropriate, and we've listed those in our report, and we can go over those in some detail if you're interested.
All right. The chair recognizes Councilmember Holden.
What could be such findings? What findings do you have to make in order to be able to use this ordinance for bid preference?
The ones that the court has held that San Francisco needed to show was that the facts relative to the burdens on local businesses are different from those outside the county or the state. For instance, there's higher taxes in the city, or higher rents, higher wages and benefits for labor, higher insurance rates and other things of that sort. The facts showing why it's beneficial to support existing local businesses and encourage others to move into the area, facts showing that the preferences are appropriate and measured, as well as relatively slight. That is, we couldn't use quotas, we couldn't use goals or set-asides. And the fourth is the assurance that the provisions only apply when the city is a party to the contract. And lastly, that the facts show that the definition of the local business preference is fairly broad, so it's not to prohibit any business from becoming a local business. San Francisco had a very well-developed definition in their ordinance. In other words, it's not just where the main office is, but if you do enough business here and have an office, you can be a local business.
Madam President, members, the reason why I called this item special, which offers a special compensation, a bid process to local businesses for the city of Los Angeles, the idea that would provide for jobs and create more businesses, economic development in our area. This idea was first conceived by Zev Yaloslawski, who was a councilman at the time, and Mr. Hernandez, I think, caused it to be implemented upon occasions. But I wanted the other new members, and I'm glad you're listening, Madam President, that when this matter should come up, where a contract has been let and the company is not within the city of Los Angeles, I think Mr. Yaloslawski provided for a ten percent surcharge in order, which you did not mention.
I'm sorry. I was just about to bring that up.
You're about to mention a ten percent surcharge. But we have about six or seven new council members, and not only, Ms. Perry's the only one that has a desk paying attention. So therefore, when we're no longer here, that institutional memory is going to go down the tubes, and businesses that would otherwise be supported in the city of Los Angeles, except for you, Madam President, they would not even have the knowledge that this ordinance is under books. So we're counting on you at this point in time, because Ms. Hahn and Mr. LeBange is over there, and Mr. Garcetti, and Ms. Grule is sitting here, and their heads are going in the other direction, didn't hear a word what the city attorney said. And that's very unfortunate. But that's why I called it special. Thank you.
Just to add one thing, and that is that there are already two administrative code provisions that deal with the award of contracts and local business preferences, and one has to do with contracting for automated refuse collection containers, and one is a general administrative provision for small local businesses.
All right. This matter is now before us, and the institutional memory is not only around the horseshoe, but in the CAO, the CLA, and the city attorney, who will execute those contracts. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That matter is approved.
Madam President, you also have a special meeting pending before you, and there isn't an ordinance. Did you wish to consider that while you have twelve members?
Yes. Let's go call the special meeting into order.
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Grule, Hahn, Holden, LeBange, Ms. Katsi, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Signa, Padilla, twelve members present in a quorum, Madam President.
All right.
Item numbers one and two are items for which public hearings have not been held.
I see no cards that are submitted, so we will open the public hearing and close the public hearing. Those matters, number one and two, are before us. Mr. Holden calls item one special. So item two is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That matter is approved. Let us go back to item number one, and the chair recognizes Councilmember Holden.
Maybe somebody from Ethics can come up and tell us if they can't, then we just hold this over.
We have people who are coming forward to speak and answer your questions.
I want to find a reason to vote for it, but I have to hear from them.
All right. We could have a presentation from staff.
What's the significance of it? What's wrong with the process now that this is going to make better? And I want to be able to believe that.
Ian Philip, Director of Policy for the City Ethics Commission. To answer your questions, Mr. Holden, the ordinances before you today would put back into place reporting on independent expenditures...
Can you turn his mic up, please, to ground out some of this talk around here?
The ordinance would put him back in place, reporting for independent expenditures and member communications. That was in place before for the two thousand and one regular and two thousand and two special elections. In addition to putting into place a reporting schedule which matches more specifically with the new election dates that the voters approved for the city, and in addition to that also require, excuse me, require a little, a different procedure for if there is an amendment to the original reporting of an independent expenditure or member communication that's submitted to the City Ethics Commission.
What is the amendment? What makes the amendment different? Tell me.
Well, basically, what we saw was that because of the timeliness of the periods in which independent expenditures and membership communications occurred in city elections, we felt it was very important that if there was a group who had made such a payment, that that payment, when it was changed or altered, that time was of the essence in getting the amendment statement from that committee.
From that special committee?
Yes.
Independent committee?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that is a summation of what's in the ordinance.
What would trigger the need for an amendment?
It could be that there was originally one specific set of candidates that, or a handful of candidates, that the expenditure was first reported that it was going to be directed towards, and then the group making the expenditure decided that it was going to alter that expenditure payment. That's one example.
Isn't there some limit on the expenditure that, what was the limits that would require reporting prior to the passing of the state legislation or the state charter? Was that, yeah, there's a charter with it. Ordinance, charter.
Are you speaking of the expenditure limits?
Yeah.
In connection with the independent expenditures? Yes. The provisions that are currently within the campaign finance ordinance within the municipal code still are in place for when the lifting of... the municipal code still are in place for when the lifting of the expenditure limits occur.
What are the limits?
I believe they're $25,000.
Per candidate. When the independent committee expends up to or in excess of $25,000, then what triggers this? That's the question I'm asking you. What happens after that?
What happens after that is that once we receive notices that that threshold has been exceeded by payments or expenditures made by such a group.
On behalf of?
On behalf of one or more candidates in a race. What would occur then is that we would notify all the candidates in the affected race that the expenditure limits were lifted for that race.
Expenditure limits for indefinitely?
I believe that is correct.
Or until they reach that amount, which was expended by the independent committee?
Until they reach the amount. Until they reach that amount.
Until that amount, so you're still chasing your shadow, because if they go $25,000, then they, each day they spend a thousand, or they have to spend $25,000 or more, now it's $50,000, or $75,000, and the candidate, opposing candidate, won't know how this gradation of expenditures are taking place, at what time you have to notify the other candidates that the limit's been raised from $25,000 now to $50,000 or $100,000.
Well, that's what this disclosure requirement would require that's contained in this ordinance, so that we would be.
What are the increments? That's what I'm trying to say. Is it $25,000, now you're spending, now it's $26,000, now it's $27,000? Because you can only spend, once the opposing candidate is notified, they can only spend up to that amount. Say it's up to $25,000, now that's the cap. How do you increase the cap?
Well, if we receive additional notifications of expenditure.
What would require you, them to notify you for additional expenditures, notification? That's the point I'm trying to.
This specific law would require, in addition to.
I have a clarification from the city attorney. Once the expenditure limit is lifted, it's just lifted.
Okay.
So we would notify the candidates that the expenditure limit is lifted, and it's go away.
That's what I needed to know. All right, the city attorney knew, but you didn't. But you're the guy who do the auditing the books and do the investigation and the checking and all of that. You got to know. All right, so there are some elections that took place recently which caused you to trigger, to make this change, is that correct?
Councilman, the changes that are before you today were putting back into place for the 2003 elections, because there were temporary ordinances in place for 2001 elections and the 2002 special elections, once those elections had ceased to be operating.
Madam President, members, I think this is an appropriate change. I think it's needed. I think it's a loophole that's being used by some independent committees, and we need to close it. So I'm going to vote aye.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Gruel.
I just have a question. I know there are a number of other items that are part of this proposal that the commission had, and some that are still in the commission, some that are also in Rules Committee still, because I think there are, and I've talked frequently about my own experience in the independent expenditure issue. When do you plan on having some of those other items come forward that will govern how we operate to fix some of those additional loopholes relative to reporting requirements, et cetera?
The set of changes that you're addressing, Councilmember, will be coming to the Rules and Elections Committee very shortly, in terms of the bigger package. That will be addressed in the bigger context of the, all the different campaign finance recommendations that the Ethics Commission will be moving forward for council consideration.
Okay. And on the first part of this item, it's relative to the messages that people, could you explain that a little bit to, because I guess there was some confusion whether it is recorded calls, whether it is calls that come from phone banks, et cetera, what this impacts particularly?
The change that was made by the Rules and Elections Committee was to specifically focus the ordinance on recorded calls for the element, there was a concern within the committee about whether we would be capturing, say, phone banking that would be going on through volunteers, and the scripts for that type of activity would need to be reported, and the chair of the committee, the council president, felt that it was more, it was better to specifically target, in terms of telephone calls, for specific recorded calls.
So it particularly is on that item?
Yes.
Well, I think I'm anxious to see, and if you'll let us know, on some of the additional checks and balances as part of the review of this, I want to make sure that, again, that there's always an even playing field in reporting requirements, and so welcome those additional changes being made to these ordinances, and want to expedite them as quickly as possible. So share with me or my office at some point if there are any barriers to getting that done.
Absolutely. You'll be seeing the package very shortly in your office.
Great, thank you.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Labange. Okay, Mr. Labange does not wish to speak. There are no other councilmembers wishing to speak on this. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden again.
Yeah, but there's telephone calls. Say, some organization decides they want to make a, establish a telephone bank. That's an independent committee, you might say. How would you monitor that independent committee that sets up maybe $100,000 telephone bank? With individuals there making phone calls?
That could potentially be a concern with the change that was made.
Well, how would you manage to close that loophole? That's a gap, too.
We understand, Councilmember, and that was why, in the original drafting of the ordinance, we included all scripts from both, say, a phone bank that was paid for versus recorded calls.
Well, is it currently a part of the motion before us?
The report from the committee changes the ordinance to focus specifically in terms of telephone calls on just recorded calls.
Well, if you set up a telephone bank, we need to know that.
I think the councilman is addressing a larger issue of compliance, with your question, in terms of compliance of the agencies who are setting up these telephone banks or something like that, correct?
Yes, agencies that are setting up these telephone banks, and they're involved in the campaign, they're setting, making, they have fifty people on the phones. That's an expenditure.
Correct, Councilman, and if we're dealing with.
And that's not necessarily a recorded telephone call.
No, understood. In terms of the reporting that would be required by this ordinance, if the committee was making, let's say it was an independent committee that was making an expenditure for that type of phone call, then they would be required by the ordinance to report on that expenditure for that activity.
No, no.
But the specific text of the call, we would not receive with the change that came through the Rules and Elections Committee.
So you're saying to me, say for an example, my church, no, I'll just say my social club, got fifty telephone operators, fifty telephones. They're all volunteers, making telephone, but it's an organization, under auspices of an organization. That's not an independent expenditure?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I am saying that we would, through the ordinance, receive notification of the expenditure that that group was making, because if they expended enough in, for that activity, but we would not be getting the telephone scripts of what the calls were that they were making. So the specific verbiage that they were calling to the individuals.
All right, all right, okay, I'll sit down, but I just think that's a loophole, and I think it's going to be exploited. You'd be back before the council saying, oh, this happened, it was highly publicized in newspapers, now we got to close that loophole. This is a loophole.
I think we would agree with you, Councilmember, and that's something that if the council wants to address, they could do so.
Well, I would like to address it today and make it a part of the record. You asked for it, and I think we're to give it to you. Be very honest with you.
Well, if it was your organization, it wouldn't necessarily be an independent expenditure. It would be something that you would have to report on your campaign statement.
I understand, but you know what I'm talking, I want to mention, you know what I'm talking about, and that's why it's a loophole. That's why you got to fix the one that's before you now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Holden. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, item one on the special agenda, special council meeting is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven, I see, okay, eleven ayes. So that matter, the ordinance goes over for one week.
That's correct.
The chair also is going to excuse Councilmember Zine, who has a previous meeting, and that does bring us down to a ten-member quorum. We have some items for executive session, as well as those remaining on the desks. I would like to have everyone please stay. Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, there's a request that special meeting item number two go forthwith.
That will go forthwith.
Okay. That is the extent of the special meeting, too.
All right, special meeting is adjourned, and we are returning to the regular meeting.
At the regular meeting. You have, not on the agenda, is special number one. It is a motion brought forward by Councilmember Hahn and seconded by Mr. Garcetti, and the city attorney will speak to the need to make findings.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This has to do with the Pacific Maritime and the longshoremen. This morning, they were supposed to be in talks, and the talks broke down. There is no new schedule for the talks. The docks are all closed, the ships are all out there, and this is a motion by Ms. Hahn to urge the Maritime Association to cease their lockout, for the workers to report to their duties as soon as possible, and for them to continue to work out their differences, and therefore, the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and there's an immediate need to act.
All right, the council has heard the city attorney's explanation about the making of the findings. Let's open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, the matter is now before us. The chair recognizes Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we have a crisis at the port of Los Angeles and other ports on the West Coast. Since July 1st, the International Longshore and Warehouse Union has been working without a new contract through a series of contract extensions offered by the Pacific Maritime Association. This past week, the PMA decided to lock out the union, preventing them from doing their jobs of handling cargo at the port. The lockout of our dock workers is extremely serious. I would like us to send a message today to the PMA. Open the gates and let our workers do their job. While the gates are locked, our nation's economy loses an estimated $1 billion daily. While these gates are locked, holiday merchandise sits not on the shelves in the department stores, but on container ships barred from entering our ports. While the gates are locked, tons of food items, both imports and exports, are perishing in containers, literally rotting away on the docks instead of being in our grocery stores. While the gates are locked, questions remain for our cruise ship industry. At a time when we're trying to encourage tourism, there are vacationers who are now questioning whether or not they want to take a cruise ship. While the gates are locked, thousands of ILW employees wish to return to their posts so that the flow of this cargo is not interfered. And while these gates are locked, thousands more are adversely impacted, truck drivers, railroads, food warehouse workers, retailers, and it will soon be us, the consumers, who are affected by this lockout. Yesterday, a federal mediator attempted to resume negotiations. The ILW showed up in good faith. The PMA delegation, however, arrived escorted by armed guards. Today, we are pleading with the PMA to put their guns down, get back to the table, and come to an agreement with ILW, which will end this crisis. The federal government has offered to mediate, the governor has offered, Mayor Hahn has invited the negotiators to gather here in Los Angeles to continue the bargaining talks. Colleagues, what this resolution does today is, has three distinct positions. One, it urges the PMA to cease this self-induced lockout of the longshore workers. Two, it allows the PMA to allow workers to return to their duties immediately. And three, it urges both sides to return to the table to bring a resolution to this entire matter. I hope I can count on your support as we send a united message to both the PMA and ILW that we hope for a quick and definite resolution to this crisis. I urge and I vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Chair recognizes Councilmember Holden.
Madam President, members, when I heard the other day that we're losing a billion dollars a day, I took the initiative to call the trailer manager at the harbor, ask him what this is all about, and what could be done, if anything, to settle this strike or lockout. I received information from both sides. I subsequently talked to Miguel Contreras, and the solution to this lockout is on the table already. But I get the feeling that if we stay out for a while, and they can always say, look what we got you. The fact of the matter is that the PMA, so I'm told, will put in the table, will go, will computer automated system, the clerks will still keep their clipboards, and nobody will be laid off. It'll be by attrition. I suggested that you have a floor, that you, if you've got three, four hundred, three or four thousand there, so in the next three years, this contract is for three years, that so many get relieved due to retirement. And then the next few years, the same thing. Nobody will be laid off. If they want a job for a job that's lost, they're going to hire twenty-five cable operators, crane operators, twenty-five hundred crane operators, on the spot, because the Alameda Corridor, being able to move all this commerce, will cause them to hire more people as crane operators. I don't really see the problem. And for someone to say they don't have a solution to the problem, I don't think the union is opposed to that. Sedan signed those agreements. I was also told that they're willing to sign the current contract. Then if that's the case, why is all this out? I was also told that they need twelve individuals to a team, including a crane operator with experience. And what happens is that they only send eleven. If you only have eleven, then the team can't work. They sit there, and they get paid, and the team can't work. Well, there's both sides of the argument. I may be getting in trouble with my friends, but I want to tell you this, if that's the case, then who's to blame? I think they both should come to the table, they both should sit down and resolve this conflict which causing our economy a billion dollars a day, period. And I'll take my weapon over there, too. But I can tell you, this doesn't look too good at all for either side.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, the matter, the motion brought in, special one by Ms. Hahn, is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That matter is approved, and we will send it forthwith to the mayor. The chair recognizes Mr. Labange.
Madam President, for an introduction, I'd like to welcome the captain of the 1970 John Marshall High School marching band, Mr. Bruce Jay. Bruce, welcome. I was a co-captain on the football. He's a captain of the marching band, and he still plays. Welcome, Bruce.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and welcome. Mr. Clerk?
Item number sixty-four is a closed-session item that's currently pending before council.
All right, let's do the other, clear the desk of motions and requests.
Motions for postname referral.
They are so posted.
And requests for excuse from council attendants. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused on October 8th to arrive at 10:30. This is for city business and meets policy.
Councilmember Garcetti is excused to arrive late.
And Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused on November 8th, Tuesday, November 12th, and Wednesday, November 13th for personal business. This also meets policy.
Mr. Ridley Thomas is excused on those days?
The desk is clear, except for the closed session matters.
All right, I would like to ask that the members of the public clear the chambers at this time so that we can go into executive session. Anyone not involved in the executive session, please leave the chambers. There was, there were no cards received for public comments, so public comment is open and closed. Are we on? All right. We are now back into public session. Mr. Clerk?
The first item before you is sixty-four A. It's to authorize the city attorney to expand 98,700 in settlement of the case entitled City versus William F. Simone.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That matter is approved.
And sixty-four B is. And 64B is also authorizing the city attorney to expand 299,000 in settlement of the case entitled Omar Hernandez versus City of Los Angeles.
That matter is now before us, members. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That matter is also approved. The desk is now clear. Are there any announcements? Chair recognizes Mr. Holden, Mr. Labange for an announcement.
Thank you very much, Madam President. On Sunday, October 6th, in Griffith Park, the Symphony of Glynn will conclude their summer series in a beautiful American landscape, music from the Americas, with work from Aaron Copland, John Adams, Scott Joplin. It's a free concert, and it's a beautiful old zoo area in the central part of the park near the historic Merrick Round, and the Symphony in the Glynn is the orchestra, and it's a fabulous free concert for everybody, so anyone who's listening, please come, enjoy the park, and enjoy the Symphony in the Glynn and their magnificent Sunday concert shooting, saluting the American landscape. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Mr. Reyes for an announcement.
Just thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmembers, this past Friday and Monday, the governor signed into law two significant bills that further protects our tenant residents. SB 460 was signed into law on Friday, under this new law, lead contamination will for the first time be declared a housing code violation, giving enforcement officials authority to mandate abatement and cite those who do not comply. This new law provides clear statutory definitions of lead hazards that our Department of Building and Safety and Housing Department can now enforce. Many of our young kids, many of the children that are victims of lead poisoning suffer irreversible damage to their cognitive and motor skills, so we need to enforce this, try to be more preemptive in terms of dealing with this issue. So I'm happy to say that we are now in a position where we have a law that has teeth, that comes from the state. Earlier this year, I introduced a lead safe housing initiative package, which included the resolution adopted by the council to sponsor and support state legislation, so thank you for that. Lastly, I also asked the council to support AB 2330, and the council did so, and I happily informed my colleagues that this, too, was signed into law by the governor on Monday. This bill by Assemblymember McDonough of San Francisco clears the way for tens of thousands of tenants in California to be able to seek their fair return of the security deposit from their landlords. And I understand the landlords are also pleased with this bill because it gives them a clear definition of how to deal with this problem of lead poisoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Now is the time for adjourning, Mr. Burnson, do you have an adjourning resolution or an announcement? Okay, could we all please stand for the adjourning tributes? Chair recognizes Mr. Burnson.
Rosemary Rose Gendreau Wise passed away on September 29th. She was 52 years of age, survived by a mother and father, a brother and sister, and for a mother and father, I think I can speak firsthand, there's nothing worse than to survive one of your children, so we ask that we adjourn in her memory.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Madam President, members, I'd like to announce that Sadie Clark passed away in her sleep the other night. He was a longtime public servant, commissioner for Supervisor Hahn and the planning commission, and also when he left office, she stayed on the commission, serving at the pleasure of Supervisor Burt. She subsequently, she did eventually retire from the commission after many years of service, active in real estate, active in our community, always involved in where there's a critical issue or problem to be solved, you can find Sadie Clark. And she passed away peacefully in her sleep, although her niece reported that her health was halting her, but she was still well, and went to sleep and went on to the sacred place. So we will miss her. She leaves a lot of fond memories. Sadie Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Hahn would also like to be a member of that. Chair recognizes Mr. Labange.
That's all right. Thank you, Madam President. As I introduced Bruce J. this morning, who was here briefly from Old High School, I had stopped by his business this morning, returning from a morning hike in Griffith Park, and then one of his workers was opening up their business, so it's ironic that he showed up here kind of on the same day, and I learned that his father had just passed, who lived to be 95 years old. He was born in Hoboken, New Jersey, came out to Los Angeles in 1925, lived in the Los Feliz community, was very involved, and was a great educator at Wilson High School here in El Surino, over 40 years a Los Angeles Unified School teacher, and also librarian, and he leaves two sons and one grandson, so it's funny how we all run into each other, but life passes on. 95 great, wonderful years, and now in a better place.
Thank you.
Marty J.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to adjourn today in the memory of Crystal Tashell White, who was killed in a senseless act of violence. She was 20 years old from Cerritos, killed last Wednesday at 7:20 PM. She was riding in the car with a friend of hers and her 22-month-old son when she was confronted by a group of teenagers near the intersection of 83rd and Avalon. Four or five boys ages 16 to 20 rode alongside the car and bikes and confronted Ms. White and the rest of the passengers, issuing a gang challenge. In response, Ms. White got out of the car, told the boys that neither she nor her companion were gang members, and asked them to leave them alone. When she got back into the car, one of them began shooting. One of the shots went through the window, striking her lower torso as she protected her 22-month-old son. She died from the wounds, but her son survived unharmed. She is survived by her son Cory Walker Jr., fiance Cory Walker Sr., parents Kevin White Sr. and Tracy White, and siblings Kevin Jr., Taylor and Tyler. And we are in the process of determining whether or not the LAPD would like us to provide a reward in this case. It's a horrible tragedy.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of Councilmember Pacheco, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of John Gabel, longtime resident of Glassow Park, and former treasurer of the Glassow Park Improvement Association. He passed away on October 1st. John's daughter is Emily Gabel, who worked for the city planning department. She was with him when he passed away at Holmbeck Home in Boyle Heights. I'd like to also adjourn, on behalf of Dennis Zine, Councilmember Dennis Zine who had to leave. Barry Albarin lost a heroic fight against cancer. He was a Woodland Hills resident, began his career as a structural plan checker for the city of Los Angeles, was quickly promoted to the head of the public counter at Van Nuys Building and Safety Office. In 1967, Barry left the city and opened up his own business in Sherman Oaks. Very soon became the king of engineering for signs and swimming pools. The late 1970s, Barry Barin formed Barry Construction, which built thousands of family-style apartment buildings in the west half of Fernando Valley. As one of the most successful graduates in the city of Los Angeles family, it is said that Barry's secret of his success was his executive secretary many years, who really ran the business, the former Mrs. Dennis Zine, the mother of his children, Christopher Narick Zine. This is Dennis's adjourning motion. He is survived by his two sons, one daughter, and grandchildren and brother.
Second on that, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Burnson will second that. The Chair recognizes Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President and members of the council, let me ask, could we adjourn in memory of Walter H. Annenberg? Passed away yesterday at the age of 94 from complications, as we read, from pneumonia. This is tribute is being presented by, co-presented by Councilwoman Perry and myself. Mr. Annenberg is credited with launching the National TV Guide magazine in 1953, and founded Seventeen magazine thereafter. A great philanthropist, giving millions to charity and endowing at least two leading schools of journalism, awarded several honorary degrees from the University of Pennsylvania, Temple University, Notre Dame, Hebrew Union, Hebrew University of Jerusalem, and our very own University of Southern California. Mr. Annenberg is thought to be an amazing man who contributed much to the world of journalism, and he obviously leaves a substantial legacy. He's survived by his wife, Lenore.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk. Thank you. Council is adjourned.